You got a game tonight?
No, no.
How they?
This is last night.
Last night?
Yeah. Well, so far we had three games and then one off.
What did it for that?
Granddaughters play Mansfield.
Oh, at Mansfield?
Yeah, little freshman this year.
I'd like to go up.
How are you?
Good, good.
Thursday night, the boys are.
How are you doing that?
Okay.
At Mansfield?
It takes a little while to get that out.
They're pretty tired.
Hard to cook, cook normally.
See, they had seven, seven footballers playing football. Yeah. They didn't have to jump one day from football to basketball.
Hello, over. Roque.
Here.
There.
Here.
Here. Everybody here.
He's here.
Everybody's here. Did I? Motion to approve that, actually, I need a motion to amend the agenda.
I make a motion to amend the agenda.
Keith's motion.
I'll second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, we don't have anybody to address the board tonight. Does everybody have a chance to look at the previous amendments? Any changes or anything with anybody since? Accept amendments as posted? Okay, Peggy, on the finances.
Yeah, and you all see your package, you had some financial reports. We ended November, just a little bit shy of two million, three hundred thousand. Couple of the funds were struggling a little bit in the checking, but that was just some end of the year stuff. And after we got taxes in December, it's, they're back in the blacks. Doing, doing very well, actually. Our audit report is not completed yet, they're still working on it. And since we're not having any more meetings this month, we'll have it first meeting in January is the plan.
Suzanne has nothing. Stan, did you want to give us a little cut down on the, on the DUCO? Did you have some information you want to share with us?
Yeah, I've got some information, you got me at the bottom, you want me to do it now?
Yeah, that'd be fine.
Sure, sure. Yeah, uh, oh, Burley and I, well, everybody was invited, but they had a, they had a big dinner over there here while back. And then my wife Judy's on the board, and then we had a get together over at Mountain Grove. And they, at that meeting, all the board was there, and Cindy Heath got up and gave the, gave this report on DUCO. And there was just some stuff in there that was astounding. I was talking to Burley about it, and he said, well, why don't you just stop and just tell the board what's going on over there? And everybody can remember the way it used to be, okay? Of that is, I'm just gonna go over to this, because a lot of this is stuff that's not relevant to what I'm saying. But so far this year, the Sheldon Workshop has diverted 25 tons of aluminum, 48 tons of plastic, and 25 tons of cardboard from a landfill. And the way they do that, they get all this in, they've got a contract with Coca-Cola, and they bring it in by the 18-wheelers, because it's outdated, and they crush it. And then they sell, they sell all the plastic, the cardboard, and then other that, none of that's going into our landfills, what I'm saying. They're not crushing it, and it's going outside, and then we have to pick it up with a trash truck. Every, every pound of it goes, and they get money back out of that, plus they're, they get money for crushing it on the contract. So, uh, that in itself is tremendous. And anybody wanna maybe take a guess of how many Easter eggs with prizes inside they put together so far this year?
I went to the open house last year, and it was, it was pretty amazing how many of those they done.
So far, it's been two million, sixteen thousand, five hundred.
Wow. Yeah, I didn't guess, I never guessed.
They've got people that can put those together that I wouldn't even make the 10th cut.
Stan, Stan said he was, he was over there and said some of them were putting them together with one hand, and he said I was struggling with two.
They can put them, they can put it in one hand and take a prize and put in it and close it in one hand, and I couldn't get it together.
That's frustrating, yeah.
They've, uh, they've, 82 pallet deliveries have been made, now that's truck, truckloads of pallets. And 42,483 board feet of lumber has been heat treated. And what that means, heat treated, is you can't send a pallet out, out in the United States, a wooden pallet, without it being heat treated. There's in a very few places that heat treat, and that's one of them over there. And, and so that, with Copeland Emerson, they send a lot of their stuff, most all their stuff is made and goes to the, to another country.
What was the number again?
Uh, 42,483 feet of lumber. They've made 11,724 pallets. And that's not supervisors building, I watched them build, that ain't supervisors going out there and building them, they supervise. Those guys have got that down. Now, let me tell you, when they get a job down, they're pretty awesome to watch, it's something. And they're using those big air guns. And, uh, they've crushed 2,208 pallets of soda, and their pallet that comes in is about eight feet tall, one pallet. And they've crushed 2,208. And, uh, here's the, here's the, the big one. They had a, years ago, David and I was over there when it was what it was. And they had a, a contract with Copeland that they had these reusable plastic pa, things that holds whatever they make. One of the things they make at Emerson. And they can reuse them, but they have to be really clean, they can't be putting anything dirty in it, it has to be really clean. And they were out there with a squirt bottle and a rag, and they were cleaning those things, a squirt bottle and a rag. And when that's come under new management, they built a, a building down there, and one person, it comes in, one person puts it in, and it comes through on a conveyor, and it's sudsed, and rinsed, and dried, and one person takes it out and stacks it, and they do six, seven hundred a day, where they were doing two dozen a day. Well, anyway, and that's, and that's with, that's a contract with, with Copeland Emerson. And she upped the contract on those about three or four times what they were getting, and then doing that many more. It's a, it's a hundred and seventy-nine thousand, nine hundred and forty-one of those have been cleaned or handled and restacked so far this year. A hundred and seventeen, I'm gonna say, mine will say a hundred, a hundred and eighty thousand. That's some, that's some numbers, that's, that was, that was amazing. That you figure there's, they got 39 workers over there now. And, uh, the ones that are at one stage, they're in there putting Easter eggs together, but when they get to where they want it, they, they think they can come out and they put them on other jobs. They try them on other jobs, and boy, then when they learn it, and they're, they're making these pallets, they're making, they're sawing, resawing lumber, they're doing a lot of stuff. If you have an opportunity and haven't seen it, you really need to get over there and look at it, it's pretty amazing. And I don't think our community is aware of really what's going on over there.
Yeah, they've, they've really done a good job, and, uh, they were, some of them recognized today for some of their accomplishments.
They won the GM award, which is, oh, man, I had that written down. That's an acronym, I can't tell you, I'm afraid I'll get it wrong, but it was an award here that they were up for, and they won it.
Which I should have. Did they mention their cleaning service?
Yes, they have a cleaning service, I just didn't get into that. They've got a laundry and a cleaning, they're already, that's going, and, uh, well, they're gonna try to get the new jail. I maybe shouldn't say that, but. They got a pretty good shot at it. That, they got a, they got a, a nice cleaning service that they do for, they do about, a barber beauty shop, I think, here in town. They come and get their towels and stuff, and wash them, and clean them, and fold them, and take them back. They've been doing that for a while, that's just another thing they do.
Is it, is it going the extra mile? Is that the acronym for GM, going the extra mile?
No, I don't think.
But that sounds good.
But sounds good.
Well, let's change it.
You know, one of the amazing things about it is, you know, of course, you mentioned we all knew what that place used to look like. They're doing all this work, and it's clean over there.
I'd tell you, it's, it used to, it used to look like a.
It's something to be proud of, it really is.
It's the same work, but.
And they're really safety, really safety oriented, yep. Okay, I just, uh, that's, that's the end of what I got.
I thought that was something to be shared.
I'm really proud to, to give that, yeah.
But I appreciate you doing that, because the, the community ought to be proud of that, and Don's done a really good job, so. Any, any, any other Aldermen, any commentary on that, except to me now? Uh, treatment plant, I think we talked about this, um, but anyway, a few weeks ago, something happened, I don't know, something was dumped into, or got dumped into our treatment plant, and, uh, killed all of our bugs. And, uh, anyway, uh, that was reported to DNR, and, uh, and it was, everything was monitored, and anyway, three or four days later, uh, we went to Mansfield and got bugs from their treatment plant at Mansfield, and hauled them down here, and a truck, and, uh, uh, like the sewage treat, uh, like Tate or some of those guys. But anyway, we hauled two truckloads down here, and, uh, and our plant is, is, uh, doing good now, we think. We don't, we're not sure, I may never find out what we dumped into it. But anyway, uh, Steven said that, uh, the plant's doing not a hundred percent, but he said they're gaining on it, and, uh, but anyway, it's doing good now, but, uh, I, I had just been down there a few days prior to that, and everything was perfect. And then all of a sudden, something got dumped into it, and, uh, we've got ideals, but we don't know for sure, but, uh, and we, like I said, probably never will know. But we're, we're back in operation and everything is being treated properly now, so.
DNR couldn't tell us what it was, huh?
Nope. No. But, uh, we, you know, we're suspicious whatever it was, but was not relatively close to the plant, because if it had been dumped on, say, the northeast corner town, it would have probably been diluted enough by the time it got there that, uh, but anyway, we're, we think whatever it might have been, whatever was dumped, was pretty close to the plant, to kill all, all the bugs that are in the plant, so, uh, but anyway, we're past that now, but, uh, that was quite a shock, and Steven goes over there and, you know, nothing's working properly like it ought to, and, but, uh, we're, we're good now, so, uh, and we're thankful. Mansfield just gave us the bugs, you know, didn't cost anything other than transport them down here and dump them into our plant, so, anyway. Peggy and I actually wanna, uh, talk to you, both of us need to talk to you about this. This is something that, uh, we, we wanna talk about now, and maybe, after you all, uh, maybe implement this into the budget, the 2021 budget, which will be, uh, in, uh, July. But, uh, meter, uh, able to read our electric and water meters within here. And, uh, we think, uh, what's, what, Verba, uh, Peggy had visited with her, and, and possibly get into this for about, I'm gonna say seventy-five thousand, eighty thousand, somewhere in the neighborhood of that. Well, yeah, that's a lot of money, but that's nothing compared to what it was a few years ago. And, uh, something to think about, and, uh, uh, it will eliminate one person meter reader, that, that job will be eliminated. So that will be somewhat of a savings, uh, a little over half of that salary will be saved, because, uh, if we get this program, uh, it'll cost us a thousand dollars a month for the maintenance on it, so that's, that's twelve thousand a year. So, uh, we'll save a little over a half on the, the, uh, the wages that are going out, which, uh, but anyway, there'll be a savings there. And plus, uh, on cutoff days, we, we lose a full crew, I'm, I'm gonna say four guys for about three-fourths of a day, and then sometimes more than that, if, uh, if they have to come in after hours and turn utilities back on. So, uh, if, uh, if we do this, we'll, uh, uh, we can, we can do the disconnects right inside here. Just click it off, shut them off, and, and, uh, so that'll be a pretty good savings up, uh, as far as, we're not gonna lose a crew all day for, or three-fourths of a day, and, and I'm gonna say it'd be at least three-fourths of a day.
Three-fourths, and then overtime.
And, uh, it sounds like we can, and, what are these deals called, where we can strategically place them?
They're, well, what's on the meters is called ERTS, E R T, and I looked it up.
Well, I'm glad you did.
Yes, it's an inputter receiving transmitter, I always just call them ERTS. And those are on all of the meters, and now they've got, uh, there's, there's three different companies now that can use our existing meters that we have, we already have ERTS on the meters, because the guys drive by and get them. Uh, if we would go to this system, you would strategically put in, um, meters that would automatically read the system and transmit. And eventually, then, when those other meters start dying off, you replace them with these better meters. So by doing this, you don't have to replace your whole system at once. You can put in some strategically, it will go out and read the surrounding meters, and then transmit here. And that, uh, you know, a lot of times, the ladies are trying to calculate the bill, and we can see that there's a billing issue going on. Well, we have to do work orders, we have to get guys in, they have to go out, they have to read meters, have to do all that. Whereas if you got this system, you just pull out a calendar and read that meter. It'll also allow, Burley and I were talking about, it will map the system, uh, you know, with all of the ERTS on there, to where, when you have an outage, you don't have to call and tell us you have an outage, we can look at the screen and tell that you've got an outage. And we can also see how that outage is going, and where it's, where the possible transformer problem is, you know, and those, our guys down at the shed can have access to that, so, you know, they, they don't have to go out and start checking and figuring out, they can look at the system and say, you know, we've got one off over here, but we've got a whole line off over here. This is probably a secondary off of a storm that come through, this is probably a transformer, you know, so it's gonna help, um, with that. And, you know.
What's, another thing, what she's talking about, strategically located, that'll be in, in area, problem areas that we could, we could just hit it and shut it off.
Yeah.
But anyway, that, uh, actually, uh, we need to, I'd like to decide reasonably quick on that, because this is a, this is a procedure, it's gonna take a few months to even get it in operation. So it's something we need to start thinking about now to implement it in the 2021 budget. And, uh, but anyway, we're talking seventy-five, eight thousand dollars at this point.
You're looking at, yeah, at least a seventy-five thousand dollar capital expenditure, and then you're looking at, um, probably around twelve thousand a year for the maintenance of that program. So, you know, you've got two different things, you've got your capital expenditure, but you've also got the maintenance. But by offsetting your employee base on that, you're gonna recoup a lot of that in, in overtime and fees, and, and correct, make some corrected, corrected billing issues, saving time whenever there's outages and such as that. Um, we won't have to do, there's only three companies that actually do the system that we're talking about. So we don't have to write up a big proposal ourselves and go out and advertise to all these companies, because there's only three that do it. Our engineers said they could write up the specs, put those, uh, requests out to those companies, and then get those bids back together for us, so that we could actually see what we're looking at, what the price would be, get it put into the budget, and then be able to, if we want to actually start then working on it July 1, of getting it in. So we've got a little time, but at least.
I think we, it's, don't we really need to, uh, have a motion to start exploring this now?
At least to start exploring it, and that way we could get with the electric engineer and have him start putting a lot of the stuff together.
Because it's gonna, it's gonna take a quite a while to get numbers together, and, and there's, there's other questions, I'd like, are we gonna be able to, uh, is it, the system just manned here? Or, uh, like, after hours, can, can, uh, somebody come call in like at PD? And right now, we pay somebody double time to come in and just turn on their power. Can we eliminate that?
And I think, I think the answer would be yes to that. And I also asked them about, um, the read, because this, we were talking electric meters. I said, will it also read the water meters? And she said yes, because we have the ERTS on there, and we may have to go find, if there's a, or deep down in pit, we may have to go and, and move it up. But she said it will read the same water meters, we, now, you don't disconnect the water meter, but, you know, it would just, you could have strategic ones placed to disconnect.
Peggy, when you said twelve thousand in maintenance, uh, that twelve thousand in maintenance, does that include like software upgrades? All of that, that's all covered in that twelve thousand, I know that can get pretty expensive.
Yes.
You, you had mentioned that a few years ago.
Oh, uh, correct if I'm right, about a half million dollars, something like that.
Yeah, it was way high.
So it went from half a million to eighty?
Yeah, it went down, I know, we were looking at least two hundred fifty, three hundred to just get started. But I think the way that helps is that they developed these additional transmitters, so you put in a few meters here with a transmitter here, and they talk. Whereas before, you had to go in and replace every single meter, and by the time you replaced every electric and every water meter, you got into huge costs, so it's, it's improved tremendously in the last.
Yeah, you had to, you had water and electric, you had replacement, basically starting all over, so.
Yeah. Technology is really.
And that would give us option, if we wanted to do like a prepaid option.
Yes, it will, that, that is another, now, there's some components that go with that, that may be too expensive due to the fact of our limited number of customers that might use the service. That's some things we'd have to look at down the road. But it does give you the option then to have customers who have, you know, have bad credit or whatever, and they, they don't wanna put down a huge deposit, but they can come in and prepay, and then it tracks that, and when they get up to that amount, they can either come in and pay more, it shuts them off, you know? So, and that's very popular out in the, in the co-op, they do that.
I know it's a quality investment, but I think it'll, the investment, I think will.
It's bringing us the opportunity, whether I'm prepared or not.
You know, it's there, yeah, technology's there, but we.
And actually, I think the system will eventually pay for itself.
Well, and it also will help in that, now, it doesn't go in, I know there will be some concerns that I'm going, we're going in and checking what you're doing in your home. It doesn't do that, but it does monitor your readings even hourly, so that when you come in and you say, well, there's just no way I could have this thing built, we can go back and actually look at your hour and say, well, I can tell you, I can't tell you what you were doing, but I can tell you that on certain, certain date at this time, there was a tremendous amount, and you could go, oh, yeah, the kids were over, or, oh, yeah, that's when I had that trouble. It can maybe at least help identify some issues that could help a customer reduce their electric bill, so.
There's, there's advantages to the customer.
I'm assuming it would be able to detect leaks and water usage.
I'm, I'm thinking so, because it could be monitoring.
An abnormal amount in a certain area.
Well, and then you could set up.
Flag it as something.
Right, and you might be able to, and I'd have to talk to the receiver, it might then send us alerts, saying, you know, the old guy has used, you know, ten thousand gallons in the last four hours, duh, that's not gonna happen. But then you could call that person and say, you might wanna check your house, it's flooded.
That's a good question we can ask, and then get into, uh, get into that forward, so, uh, I'd like to, like to have a motion to.
I would understand, I'd make the motion that, uh, we start exploring this option of the, uh, meters.
AMI.
AMI, AMI meters, and, uh, gathering information and move forward.
Do we have a second on that?
I'll second that.
Is there any, any further discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
We didn't, we, uh, the last cleanup, we had a leaf on there, but there were no leaves following at that time. But I see a lot set out now, so, uh, we will, December the 18th, 19th, and the 20th, uh, we'll be picking leaves up, and, uh, but anyway, that, we're just gonna do it the three days, and, uh, we'll start on the east side, and we'll might work our way across to the west, so, uh, but anyway, three, we should be able to do, do it in three days. So 18th through the 20th, we'll have a leaf pickup. And I, I did talk to all the Aldermen about the, the 2016 GMC three-quarter ton truck that, uh, and I called you all ahead of time, but anyway, we purchased it, and they're, they're using it now, and that's for the water and sewer, sewer department. We, uh, we gave a, a little more than what, we, we bugged it twenty-five, I believe, and, uh, we ended up giving twenty-five and nine, but we did sell our other trucks, so that helped, that brought that down, so, uh, we basically stayed under budget with it, so. Uh, and it's, it's a, it's a good-looking truck. Yeah, I guess we, I, I did contact, I, every one of them, make sure, because if one of them did, we need to get it, so, uh, uh, do I have a motion on the three-quarter ton, 2016 GMC truck?
I'll, I'll make a motion to ratify it, mayor's actions.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Okay, is there any further discussion? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, guys, appreciate it. Uh, on our, uh, we got Christmas and New Year's coming up, and we're gonna do something a little bit different than what we did the Thanksgiving, uh, on, uh, they run three routes on one day prior, and, well, they just, uh, the routes that should have been picked up on Thursdays and Fridays, about half of them was put out, so, uh, it didn't, it really didn't work real good about picking and running three routes on, uh, on a Wednesday. But anyway, uh, what, what Carl wants to do this time is, uh, uh, run a, a two-day route the day after. So, uh, like, we'll be off, uh, Thursday, you'll run Thursdays and Fridays on, on a Friday, so, and it'll be after the holidays, instead of just, just prior to holidays.
Wednesday. You're running double on Thursday, right?
Yeah, yeah, what I say there, yeah, it'd be Wednesday, I was thinking, uh, Thanksgiving, but Christmas is on a Wednesday, and he'd be running double routes on Thursday. Yeah, thank you. I was, I was thinking, uh, we got filing for municipal election, and we'll have two Aldermen up, one for the east and one for the west, and that filing will start, uh, December the 17th, and it'll run through, uh, January the 21st. And I believe, uh, Keith and Stan, is that right?
Yeah.
And on, on our phone system, uh, we, uh, we're in the process of, uh, switching it all over and, uh, and just going through one, one bill instead of having four, I guess. So anyway, we're, and we're in the process of that, and we got most of it done, and, uh, and, and we're gonna have to change our new, our phones, they're not, I don't know how old they are, they're not real old, but,
They're not.
The Toshiba brand is not gonna be serviceable, I think in about one more year, I believe.
I think even less than a year.
But anyway, we're gonna, we're gonna have to get new phones, uh, in the near future, so, uh, and I, and I did call, uh, Central Link, Eric Bassett, and I'm supposed to call him back, and, but, uh, that'll, that'll be an expensive thing, new phones, and I'm, I'm not sure. I would guesstimate somewhere between five and ten thousand dollars, uh, that would be a, a guesstimation on it, so, it's not, not cheap, but.
And it's, and it's hard to know, you know, because when we bought those phones, you would think that Toshiba wouldn't be doing phones, but they're not.
We're trying to, on our phone, on our billing like there, we're trying to, trying to consolidate it, instead of having, uh, three or four different bills for one, one service, so, and, and we've backed, we got most of it done, so. But we're doing good on that. Uh, square project, Andy with Anderson Engineering was here today, and we do have, uh, uh, some preliminary plans now for, for the square. And, uh, he talked like we might, middle of, uh, spring, start the, the bidding process on that, so, uh, early summer, I, I looked for the. Early summer, I, I looked for the, the square project to get started, so that was good news. I, I was hoping to get it even sooner, but he was here today, and we do have some preliminary plans, if you want to take a look at them. I think it'll be pretty nice. I think that's all I have for open session.
Do you realize I haven't, Burley, cancel the next meeting?
Yeah, I don't, I, I don't think anybody wants to come on the twentieth, so. Do we need a motion to cancel the next meeting, or just make a decision, because there's nobody gonna be here, so. Art won't be here, Mike won't be here, so we'll cancel, cancel our next meeting. Do we have a motion to go into closed?
I'll make that motion to go into closed session.
You have a second?
I'll second it.
Billy? All in favor? What's the verdict?
About twenty-three. Actually, I was in the middle of another recording, I just